Approve the consent agenda as presented.
Be, uh, before you receive a motion on it, I would like to, uh, take the personnel report from the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda without the personnel report.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Blount.
Aye.
Mr. Cronin, oh, he's not here. Uh, Mr. Satorius.
Aye.
Mr. Shaneburg.
Aye.
Mr. Skwarzinski, aye. Uh, Ms. Voss.
Aye.
And Mrs. Conquest.
Aye, motion carries. With that, I need a motion to approve the personnel report as presented.
You're gonna make the motion?
I'll second.
And then a roll call.
Mr. Blount.
Aye.
Mr. Cronin. Mr. Satorius.
Aye.
Mr. Shaneburg.
Aye.
Mr. Skwarzinski, aye. Ms. Voss.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Don't forget your mic when you talk so we can hear you on the recording. Thank you. Now you can turn it off. Okay. We're gonna go ahead and move forward with our strategic plan updates.
Yes, so for this month, we're getting back to strategic goal number three, support a positive and productive working environment in which student-focused staff are engaged, collaborative, innovative, and accountable. In this month, we have, or welcoming back our instructional coaches to give us an update on how the year has gone and what they see going forward. Dr. Kathleen Cheserick.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen Cheserick. I'm very honored and to be here tonight with an incredible group of educators. We have our instructional coaches with us this evening. I'd like to introduce them. Ashley Webb. Jackie Tadley. Lisa Lara. John Seaton. Crystal Retzky. And Holly Klaasowski. This group is incredible to work with. They are a very dedicated group. If you recall, last year, they spent the year training and dabbling, uh, as a prerequisite to become coaches. And I think that was time worth, worth spending because they came on this year and have just not quit. They have surpassed any, uh, goals that I had that they would achieve. They've gone far past that. So they're here this evening to tell you all of the great things they've done so far this year, and we're not even finished. And they're also going to talk about their goals for next year. And again, thank you very much for allowing this to happen because I think it's just a very motivating and supportive group working with teachers. Thank you.
We are super excited to start with a celebration. I know one of our largest curiosities last year as we started was what kind of response would we get from staff members. And eight months into these roles, we were excited to see that we have met on some, um, big or small ratio here with 73% of certified staff just eight months into this. So, we're not even finished. Okay, um, so these are just some other responsibilities that we have. Obviously, it's not limited to this, but it includes like reflections, just sitting with teachers and reflecting on multiple different things, modeling for them, collecting data, depending on what we're doing. If it's any new tech, or just they want to do any kind of student engagement, we'll go in and collect data for them. Observing them, just to help with anything, professional development for all the teachers, planning and providing resources, which I know is a lot of the job is trying to find resources that help a lot of those students out.
So as Ashley just said, there's a lot of responsibilities, kind of catch all a lot of things. One of our big ones is completing coaching cycles with teachers. That's kind of the longer term. One, uh, the time range will range for a couple of weeks to a couple of months, but that is where a teacher identifies an area of growth, and they come work with us on setting a student-centered goal, coming up with a new teaching strategy or strategies, some from our instructional playbook that we've put together, or some other resources and materials, books, we've shared with them. Once we set that goal, we're in modeling with them, co-teaching with them, just sitting in the back of the room. As they're trying things out, we're collecting data to see how they're doing with it, and continuing work through that until they've reached whatever goal, target number that they were looking for. You can, we've got up on the left here, the kind of different areas. We tried to kind of break it down. You can see, uh, student engagement, the one we expected to be, has kind of been the one as we've kicked off this year with our new curriculum and with students finally being full-time back in the classroom. It's been an adjustment for them and the new curriculum for the teachers. So that's where we've been a lot, spending a lot of our time with that one and with planning down there at the bottom. As we've been sharing things with staff throughout the year, we've had book clubs, lunch and learn, some things you're gonna hear about in a couple of minutes. We've been building in other things, like right now, I know a lot of us are doing some writing with teachers because several of us have done a book club with that one. So, uh, that's where we're at this year, and we just hope to continue to, to kind of see new slices on there as staff come to us with new things that they want to work on.
Okay, um, so one other aspect that we do is, we just refer to it as PD of the month. So every month, we kind of feature a new professional development. We put it in our teachers' lounges, and we'll put it on the bulletin boards. We also like, usually send it like digitally to them. But it involves like QR codes and different interests depending on what the teachers' needs are. So we listed some of them, but each month it changes, um, depending on the needs of the school. So for the most part, like classroom management, we'll post QR codes of different styles that you could try for different, like different strategies to involve students within the classroom. But they're all available for the teachers, and each month, we try and focus on providing them with a bunch of different resources. So I think there's on brain breaks, total participation techniques, so just again, student engagement. We've done a lot with science of reading. Um, sorry, my eyes are terrible now. I can't see anything. I think I have them on here, too. So self-care was one we did in December. We had SEL strategies. And then positive reinforcement was another one, too. So there's tons, and it's not limited to those, but those were the main ones that we've been focusing on every month for the, uh, for the teachers.
So along with providing PD for the teachers, we've been making sure that we are getting our own PD because this is such a new position, making sure that we are doing the best that we can. Some of the things that we've done to continue learning as instructional coaches is, um, the training that we did last year was through Jim Knight. We continued that with the first 90 days, which was an at-your-own-pace course with him. We attended virtually the, uh, Teaching Learning Coaching Conference, um, because Kathleen wouldn't send us to Texas, so we had to do it up here, which was fine. Maybe next year. As well as, uh, kind of learning some of the things that teachers can use in their class and becoming experts on those things like IXL, DEI. That way, as teachers want to implement some of those practices into their own classrooms, they can come to us as kind of the experts to help them out with that. So we've been doing, I think, a really good job of not only providing PD to the teachers, but also making sure that we are staying, um, as current as possible on what it means to be a good coach.
As John mentioned, we've been doing book clubs with our staff as well. So on the left there are the titles that we have focused on in book studies with the teachers in our buildings. And on the right are some photos of book tastings that we held earlier this semester. There's a couple popcorn bars and a hot cocoa bar there. And we sort of modeled these after the Witten Wisdom book tastings that teachers were doing in their classrooms. And so during these days, the teachers came and enjoyed some treats. They looked through the book options that we had, and they voted on the ones that they wanted to read most so that we kind of had a path for our book studies moving forward.
All right, so the next one is lunch and learns and PD presentations. So we've given numerous opportunities for teachers to receive professional development through us. One of the opportunities we offer is called a lunch and learn. So we decide our lunch and learn topics based off the results of our quarterly coaching feedback survey that the teachers fill out for us. That way, the lunch and learn PD is more meaningful to them because it's a topic of their choice. It is optional, but we do have a large amount of interest of people coming. The first lunch and learn that we did was on engagement strategies, and this was done in November, hence the pie pictures. Some of us have also done a lunch PD on stations, question formulation technique, and our latest one is numberless word problems. Other PD that we have offered throughout the year during teacher institutes include Socratic Seminar, IXL, Witten Wisdom Refresh, and Curriculum Planning and Preparation. So as you can see, we are always willing to learn new things and to include our staff so that we can learn and grow together.
Okay, we are constantly reflecting over our experiences. Um, we have weekly coaching meetings with Kathleen, who's been an incredible leader for us. We know we would not be where we are today without her. We've set goals for 2023, 2024. We would like to continue PD opportunities for both coaches, so we're continuing to learn and grow, as well as for teachers. We want to continue the lunch and learn since staff really seem to enjoy them, and they attend them regularly. We want to revise and master our own Menoka 201 instructional playbooks that we know the strategies that are most successful for teachers in their classrooms. We want to begin new cycles with returning teachers, along with fresh teachers who are ready to embark on the journey with us. We want to become more in-depth or provide more in-depth curriculum supports for the teachers as they're going through Eureka, Witten Wisdom, and new programs coming our way. Continue to provide book study opportunities, and then our largest goal that we'd really love to work on is branching out and creating collaborative opportunities with coaches in neighboring districts so we can learn and grow together. Thank you guys for this opportunity. We all appreciate it. We're loving what we're doing.
Anybody have any questions for them before they're all gone? Thank you for coming back and updating us. Appreciate it.
Okay, uh, the, the next, uh, strategic plan update that we have for you is, um, the, the preliminary draft of our Portrait of a Graduate that we've been working on since November. The board will recall, uh, back in the fall, we engaged with Hazard, Young, and Atia to help facilitate this project of, uh, community engagement to really talk with stakeholder groups from across the district to find out what it, what it is that we want graduates of Menoka Junior High School to, to, to know, to, uh, to, to act like, uh, and, and really what skills and attributes do, do we think they need to possess. And it was a, a truly wonderfully engaging, uh, you know, process that, uh, there were 12 different focus groups that ranged from, I think we had five different parent groups, uh, we had three groups of teachers, support staff, community leaders, administrators, uh, and then there was a community forum held in, uh, January so that everyone, anyone in the community would have an opportunity to come and, and add their voice to the process. And then, um, the consultants from Hazard, Young, and Atia, Mr., um, or Dr. Jim Gay and Mr. Rick Nogel, they compiled all of that data, which is also included here in board docs and will be, uh, on our website, you know, once we conclude this process, uh, and summarized those into, uh, really what they saw as the, as the key themes. And from that point, uh, a, a district steering committee made up of our, our district office administration and Mrs. Conquest, um, got together and really took those themes and kind of broke it down into the, the six main categories that you see here. Mrs. Conquest, I don't know if you want to speak at all to the process that we went through.
Yeah, so we had great turnout to our focus groups and then great participation once people were present in those groups. Um, I know, especially in our community leaders, I want to say thank you to our area villages. Um, they really did a good job of communicating this out to our community, helping us get the word out that it was happening. Um, we had a lot of great feedback. We had representatives from the mayor's offices. We had mayors here. We had superintendents from area districts. We had Chamber of Commerce. We had a library representative, um, and so on. Um, and they really did a great job in helping us spread the word that this was happening, um, and trying to get as many stakeholders in. I know I spoke to one person who came, um, to the community forum who didn't even have kids in our district, but heard about it through, um, other community organizations sharing it. So, uh, much appreciated to our community for supporting us in that process. Um, it was very fascinating to sit down and, as you guys look through the, the data that they, um, linked here for you, to see a lot of common themes that came out of the different groups. So everything from students to community leaders had a lot of the same subjects they, they touched on. Another thing I want to make sure we mention is that these are kind of the, the overarching themes, but there were many more things that came out. Um, and so the idea is, once we decide on an image, there will then be some kind of bullet points to elaborate a little more on these. So for example, like, a lot of the areas talked about bringing in more community resources, talking about the trades, um, talking about different, um, career paths and things like that. And so those things will be touched on in the bullet points. So this is not all-inclusive to the things that, that came out of it. Obviously, uh, strong academics are the basis of what we want to be doing here and need to be doing here. And so that was kind of the center of, of each image that came out. And then we kind of condensed the main themes into, um, trying to make them quick bullet points. So if people are gonna just take a quick glance, that, um, they would get an idea of what builds a graduate of Menoka 201. So thank you to those in the community that came out to those, um, focus groups and the community session. Your, uh, feedback was very invaluable to this process. Dr. Munt and I were at each focus group to welcome people in the community, um, to encourage open and honest feedback, and, um, I think we were able to achieve that. People really, um, seemed to enjoy the process. So, um, looking for feedback from the board on kind of the images we have here, and then obviously the rest of the data that's here for you to look through as well.
If I could, you're quickly, Mr. Susie, could you bring up the engagement report, the other attachment that's in there? So there, there is way too much data in here for us to read to you, uh, but this engagement report really walks you through the process that was gone through. Uh, it outlines, uh, the, the types of focus groups that we held. And then you get low, almost like the raw transcription, or like the, the, the things that the consultants were hearing from each of the different groups as they asked the, the four, um, guiding questions for this. So, uh, the first question that they asked is what academic skills will our students, uh, need for success? Second question was what SEL or character traits will our students need to be successful? Sorry, I need to bring that up. Third was what does it mean to be a global citizen? And how can we help our students understand their community, their country, and the world? And fourth are, what are the hopes, aspirations, and dreams that our community has for our children? And so you will be able to see a long list of bullet points for, for each of those that the consultants then, like I said, they, they kind of coalesce those into, to key themes that our group then took to kind of narrow it down to those, uh, those six, you know, key areas in addition to being academically prepared. Um, and to echo what, uh, Mrs. Conquest said, there, there was just so much great data that came out of the, the focus groups and the community forum. Like, it was, it was really interesting to read what the, uh, the, the high school teachers and students gave us feedback, you know, having gone through our junior high school. Uh, and then it was many of the department chairs, and, and, you know, staff from the high school that were there to, you know, say, this is what we see, you know, this is what we think students, you know, need more of, or, and all of that. It was just really good data. Hearing from the community leaders, uh, the other superintendents in the region, the, the mayors about what they want for the community. Um, it was, it was just truly a wonderfully engaging process with, with the community. So, um, I applaud the board for, uh, supporting this. Um, so again, way too much data there to read for you. But we come, it, you know, we, we brought it down to these key themes here. And I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Lisa Wilson in the back for putting together the, the visuals for us. Well done. And, uh, we did not feel comfortable deciding between the two, so we thought we'd bring the board in to, to give some feedback, uh, on, on these. So, uh, this is a more circular, uh, circular version. Uh, we, we definitely like the image of the, the, the three children as they grow, uh, because it, it kind of represents the, the levels that we have here in Menoka. We have Menoka Primary Center, um, and then we have our four elementary buildings, and then we have our two campus buildings, uh, that the, the students eventually graduate from. So all of these, for us, we, we, we felt that the foundation was the academic preparation. That's kind of at the core and the base of everything that we do. Uh, and then the other six, you know, aspects of being a critical thinker, uh, being inclusive and kind, being an effective communicator and collaborator, being an engaged and informed citizen, uh, being responsible and resilient, and being a self-advocate were the, the main themes that we took out of the data that the consultants brought to us. So one is a circular representation. The other just kind of stacks them, uh, in, you know, sort of columns. So interested to hear your feedback on the process and any feedback you have on the visualizations that we prepared. The other piece that Mrs. Conquest spoke about is, uh, we do plan on there being a page two that takes these things and like gives either, either in paragraph form or, or bullet points a little bit more of the data that went behind, you know, selecting a critical thinker and what we think that means, you know, and to, to each of the other ones as well. So I'll take, I'll open it up for questions.
So I'll start, I suppose. Uh, the process itself was so much information, reading through that. There's so much information to read through, and I think it's, it's something that people should read through if they're interested because there is a lot of information. On the pictures, I mean, they're both really great. I know you said, uh, Ms. Wilson did them, and they're, they're really fantastic. I had a hard time. I think I spent a lot of time looking between them. They're, they're both very good. I would personally, the one where it's not a circle, with academically prepared being in the forefront, kind of the very first thing, and everything else behind it, because while all of the items are amazingly important, to me, there's nothing more important than academically prepared in the schools for high school and beyond. So with academics taking kind of a leading role in that picture, I think that's a really great idea. If I had never seen that one, I would think the other circle one was amazing, too. So I think they're both fantastic, but, uh, academically prepared throughout the information is, is something that can't be placed with all the other stuff in my mind. I think that's really what we're here for.
And I think that was the, the idea we were going for with it being the platform under the students. But I see what you're saying now, how it stands out a little bit more in the, the more linear image.
I concur. Um, I like the more linear image. It just helps me to focus more, I think, on each and every one. So my eyes go directly to that one. Uh, however, I think they're both amazing, so much appreciated. Ms. Wilson, for your work on that.
Any other feedback?
And also this, like Dr. Munt said, this will all be available on the website when we're done with this process. Also, one group I don't want to leave out, our junior high students were an incredible focus group. They were very chatty, um, with Dr. Gay. They had a lot of great feedback, a lot of great information. We had a wide variety of students, um, that participated in that, um, that process. So I want to thank them for taking the time out of their day to do that.
Yes, I'm, it shouldn't come as a surprise that the junior high students were very chatty. And we, we, we let that one go a little bit longer than the scheduled time, but, uh, we had about five groups right after that, so we, we couldn't get too far off schedule. But they probably could have gone for, for twice as long as, as we were able to allot for them. All right, well, thank you for, uh, you know, that discussion, uh, and thank you for the, the feedback on the images. We will, um, again, we will bring you a, um, a two-page portrait of a graduate back to the, the April board meeting for potential approval.
Okay, with that, we're gonna go ahead and move on to action items, uh, 5.01 with the approval of the 2023-2024 academic calendar.
Ms. Massey, can you take the podium, please?
Hello, everyone. Uh, so the calendar before you is our version three. Um, good evening, by the way. It's version three, which I presented last month. Um, it is in alignment with mainly everything that the high school is doing as far as their, their breaks are concerned. And we, as a committee, felt that that was the best, um, calendar to put forth for our community. So I will take any questions if you have them.
And this is exactly the same as shown last month.
Yes, ma'am.
Does, does this, um, overlay perfectly with the high school?
Everything except, the start and the close of the year, we're off by a couple of days there, as we always are, but everything else was in line step with what the high school's doing.
But the other, uh, other days, like Christmas Vacation and
Yes, sir.
Spring Break, all those.
We knew that was important to our community.
Other questions on the calendar?
Just, just one comment. Um, we did receive, uh, I did receive one email from a community member with suggestions for the calendar. Uh, this, that was a little different than what we've been doing historically. It was, um, you know, requesting that the start date almost be moved back to after Labor Day. That's a little bit further out of alignment with, uh, what, uh, our, our high school friends do that, you know, we, we didn't, we didn't feel the need to, to change our recommendation based on that one. But I believe I did forward that onto the board for you to read.
Thank you.
I have one more comment. It's too bad that we, it's too bad that we have to include snow days at the end since we are, probably will never use snow days again. We'll use e-learning days.
Correct. I think, uh, we had the, uh, Snowmageddon from a few years ago that shut us down for more days. You know, I think we learned in the early stages of e-learning, when it's snow days, there's something to be said about maybe having a good old-fashioned snow day in there, too. But I agree with you. I think, uh, you know, when, we have to pad those on at the end, just as safety, but, um, you know, we hope we never have to use them.
Other questions or comments? If not, I need a motion to approve the 2023-2024 academic calendar as presented.
I'll so move.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
All right. Ms. Voss.
Aye.
Mr. Satorius.
Aye.
Mr. Blount.
Aye.
Mr. Shaneburg.
Aye.
Mr. Skwarzinski.
Aye.
And Mrs. Conquest.
Aye, motion carries. Uh, with that, we'll move on to the approval of the intergovernmental agreement with respect to the Village of Shanahan, I guess, Tax Increment Finance District. I assume, Mrs. Robinson.
Yeah, so the next two items are, are kind of together. Uh, she's gonna speak to them both as one, but there are two separate action items that we will need the board to, to take. Ms. Robson?
Yes. Um, so the first, uh, item is the actual intergovernmental agreement, and then the second item is actually, um, a, it referenced in the IGA, and it's the settlement agreement. So this is the Oxable TIF. We've been talking about this for quite a while. It was a TIF that was established in 1998 for 23 years, um, between the Village of Shanahan and Oxable Liquid Products. Um, so we extended it a year, well, not we, but the village extended the TIF for a year while all of the taxing bodies worked out a possible extension. So what we have tonight is extending the TIF, um, for the additional 12 years. Um, and this, what is up on the screen right now, I think, is page two of the PowerPoint, and it's just basically the summary, but to me, it has the, um, important elements of the extension. So there's the sharing of the TIF surplus. So any of the taxes that are deemed surplus at the end of the tax year, currently we're splitting, it's a pretty complicated, uh, formula, whether it's a 60-40 split or an 80-20. In the new extension agreement, that's a flat 85-15 sharing, which means that the 85% is going back to the taxing bodies. So that's an increase. Uh, based on the complicated formula, we're getting around between 75 and 80%. So that's an increase. And then the other fact that is really important is the, um, increase in the EAV. So currently, the EAV is 114.2 million, and it's going to be raised to 147.5 million. And then there's also, every four years, that will increase, um, by 4%. So the main gist with these two components, the increase in the sharing of the surplus and the increase in the EAV, we're looking at an increase of revenue to the district of about $1.4 million per year, um, which began this year, and then will go on, and actually increase slightly in four years, and then in four years again, so that we'll be, um, receiving that larger amount, um, for the next 12 years. So it provides us stable income. Um, we know the EAV, so there's not, um, a discussion every time, you know, the tax cycle comes up, um, and we can budget appropriately. So it's a nice, stable income for our district for the next 12 years.
Would you do us a favor?
Okay.
Not just us, not just the board, but everybody in the audience, and explain in simple terms what a TIF is.
Okay.
Because this is all the results of the TIF.
Yes.
But what is a TIF? But what is a TIF?
So a TIF is an area that would be either underdeveloped or maybe be decaying, that's considered blighted, that we, they basically freeze the taxes on so that they encourage redevelopment or growth in that area. So then after the 23-year period, when hopefully the property at that point has been developed, then it's fully assessed, and then the tax taxing bodies would be able to collect the taxes. So in this case, the area that was decided in 1998 was specifically where Oxable Liquid Products, and part of the agreement was that they would invest a very large sum of money into an expansion of that property.
Now, will they be issuing any bonds for that, for the development, or just freezing of the taxes?
For the extent, for the extension, no, there is no issuing of bonds.
So for TIF, if you're unfamiliar, Tax Increment Financing District is what TIF is the acronym for. And yes, they freeze the EAV, not necessarily the taxes, but as the EAV grows above that amount, all of the incremental EAV, the taxes from that incremental EAV is, you know, basically, the the TIF district almost becomes its own taxing body, and the taxes get sent there for the developments in that area. This is a a very collaborative TIF district. There are many TIF districts where there is no surplus that comes to any of the taxing districts. It is all funneled into just furthering the development. And this is basically, a Tax Increment Financing District is an economic development tool for municipalities to spur development in areas that otherwise, you know, might not ever convince a developer to, you know, take on the costs of infrastructure or or developing the the property. This has been a wonderfully collaborative, where surplus was, surplus back to the taxing districts was included in the in the original IGA, and then this one is even more beneficial to us based on the relationship that we've had with Oxable and the other taxing districts. So this is a a very positive development for for Menucha 201.
And I don't know which one of you wants to answer this, Mary, maybe. People get confused when they hear the word surplus and what that means to us, so can you just kind of explain that that is our portion of the taxes for this TIF district? Can you explain, like, how how they determine that?
Yeah, I'll I'll jump in. So, yeah, so their Oxable Liquid Products is the the property owner, the only property owner within this TIF district. So they are paying the full amount of property taxes that, all of the tax rates based on their their actual EAV. However, because most of it, like their EAV was locked at the the time that the TIF district was established at a much lower amount, all of the EAV, all of the taxes from the factory that's there have, you know, go into the TIF district, not coming to us, the schools, or the libraries and all of that. Because of the surplus agreement in the IGA, like, they then said, have, it's, like she said, it has been a rather complicated formula each year, but they have been then dedicating a certain amount of those incremental taxes to deliver back to us. So they're basically giving us a good portion of the property taxes that we would have otherwise collected.
That's exactly what I meant. Thank you for that, for reading my mind there. Other questions? I need a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with respect to the Village of Shanahan Nigas Tax Increment Finance District as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
And we approve the intergovernmental agreement with Shanahan.
Second that motion.
And then a roll call?
Mr. Skwarzinski.
Aye.
Mr. Blount.
Aye.
Mr. Sartorius.
Aye.
Mr. Shaneburg.
Aye.
Mrs. Voss.
Aye.
And Mrs. Conquest.
Aye, motion carries. With that, we need a motion to approve the Second Amendment to Oxable Liquid Products. Do you have more you want to talk about with that one?
No, the only other thing is attached, you'll see, that if the board approves tonight, then we'll send a letter of support, which I've given the example, the sample letter that we will send. We were updated by the Village of Shanahan this morning that all of the other taxing bodies, so I think we're one of either nine or 10, all of the other taxing bodies have already approved this, just it happened to be timing that we were the last, so they're waiting on our letter, which, if approved, I'll send tomorrow morning.
Yeah, to to clarify, even all of us approving these agreements doesn't actually extend the the TIF district. Only the General Assembly of the State of Illinois can extend the TIF district. So, and they will not even entertain it unless there is letters of support from every one of the taxing bodies. So once we all sign off on this, they put a packet of letters together, and I'm sure they will introduce it with one of our local legislators down in Springfield, and it will get added to some bill that's going through the system this spring.
Thank you for that. Other questions for this one? Okay, I need a motion to approve the Second Amendment to Oxable Liquid Products settlement agreement as presented.
So...
I'll second.
Aye.
Ms. Voss.
Aye.
Mr. Blount.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Shaneburg.
Aye.
Mr. Skwarzinski.
Aye.
And Mrs. Conquest.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you, Mrs. Robinson. Next action item that we have is also with property development. We have been approached by the Grundy Economic Development Council, along with the other taxing districts here in Menucha, to consider approving a tax incentive agreement with Green Township Hospitality LLC for the purposes of building another hotel in Menucha. This would be a Holiday Inn Express along Granger Way. And this incentive agreement is is basically calculated and created by a a formula that the the GEDC, that's the Grundy Economic Development Council. They have an application process, and based on the amount of new property, the EAV, the the number of jobs that they'd be bringing to the area, the level of job, like the amount of compensation and benefits that go into it, they use all those things, and they come up with a recommendation of the taxing districts on what type, or like what amount and what length of tax abatement that they would recommend. And this fell right in line with the other two Menucha hotels that the board in prior years had approved this identical agreement with. It would be a three-year abatement agreement, where it would be, in the first year, 75% of the new property taxes, 50% in year two, and 25% in year three. I believe that the total amount of the abatement, based on projections at this time, would be about $196,752. But this is also compared to what we expect to be an annual, once this is is all said and done, annual new taxes of $130,000. So it would be recouped in in a relatively short amount of time. So we do recommend that the board approves this. There is conditions in the application that if they don't put as, like, as big of a hotel on the property, or they don't have the right number of jobs, they would have to repay the taxes that were abated to them. So there are protections built in.
I'll make the the motion that we approve the tax incentive agreement. I will second that. This has worked out well for us in the past. In fact, when we had some that did not meet the requirements, we did get some reimbursement in the past, so it's it's a good program.
Yeah, that wasn't a hotel. That was a, that was a warehouse, you know, from quite a few years ago, but...
Right.
But yes, they have shown that they will go back and get the taxes if the the people don't commit to the the workforce that they apply with.
Um, Mr. Skwarzinski.
Aye.
Mr. Sartorius.
Aye.
Mr. Blount.
Aye.
Mr. Shaneburg.
Aye.
Ms. Voss.
Aye.
And Mrs. Conquest.
Aye, motion carries. On to 5.05.
Mr. Aaron Souza will present the approval of E-Rate Technology Projects.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. So every year, we look at various kind of technology, infrastructure, behind-the-scenes projects, and with the federal program known as E-Rate, all these projects are eligible to 50% reimbursement. So all these projects that go behind the scenes are new cabling, new fiber, new access points and things like this. They all qualify for up to 50% reimbursement. So we we posted all of these projects on the federal website, had numerous bids from various vendors on all these projects, and essentially choosing either the lowest cost or best-fit solution, depending on each project. I'll just kind of run through each project and the quick reasoning, and take any questions. So first up, at the Junior High Network, three of the hallways are looking to replace their kind of switching, switching and routing gear, as the new access points, which we'll get to later, require a new power that we just can't really fully power. At the Intermediate School, we're looking to run new fiber optic cabling to connect all the data closets at the Intermediate School. Our current aging kind of fiber optic cable from the installation is basically either in need of repair or replacement, so we're opting for just replacements, so we're not just, so we're moving forward at a a long-term solution. That would put that solution for probably 15 years, so we would be good for roughly 15 years before we're kind of reevaluating it. For the past three or four years, we've been doing essentially a network cabling project at each building. So this is year four, so MES is kind of dubbed as the next up. So this would be running the new copper cabling to support current and future wireless access points and other infrastructure projects. District-wide battery and kind of uninterrupted power supply units. What's, why this is important is when the lights do go out, when power is dropped, these keep our networking hardware and servers and things operational, both from, just say, keeping things running in operation and not like hard failing, but also just from a safety perspective. So internet still works, phones still work, you know, for anywhere between 30 minutes, maybe to an hour, depending on various factors. And again, this is a project where every four or five years, you try to replace the batteries, and every 10 years, we replace kind of the controller modules. Again, at 50%, it's really a smart investment. And lastly, kind of the bigger ticket item is a complete kind of wireless access point upgrade at the Junior High Intermediate and hopefully MPC. Many years ago, when we installed, we did those three buildings first, so they're kind of due for replacement. On a kind of side, interesting note, we've actually had a lot of problems just this past week at the Intermediate School, in particular with their wireless access points. So definitely kind of like putting fuel to the fire of pushing this project and making it a recommendation for this year. If all things go well, the vision is the entire networking stack, if you will, between the wired and the wireless would all start moving towards one direction, and so we'd have a single pane of glass over time from both a management perspective, but also a troubleshooting and analyzing perspective. Right now, we kind of have, you know, different vendors and different systems. So is it a wireless problem? Is it a wired problem? Is it a switching problem? Is it a firewall problem? We're going to slowly start, kind of, the plan is to kind of converge that into one kind of platform for, to give us faster response time and have maybe a better heads-up when there are problems. If this goes well, then the plan would be next year to round out the other K4s and kind of, again, kind of bring it all in the plan. But again, bring this in over stages and years, so it's not huge bills, it's a little bit more spread out and manageable. Sorry, that's a lot. So with that, I'll open up any questions on all these projects.
So it, I'm sorry, the the, it says a two-to-four-month lead time. Is the expectation it would be arrived and installed before next school year?
Yeah, see, the plan is we would start issuing purchase orders this week, and we would get them ideally in June, July, and August and sell then. But that's why, one of the reasons why I want to kind of bring it to you guys now and not next month.
What was the, you had mentioned that there, coincidentally, there was an issue this past week. Can you expand more on that?
Yeah, so over at Intermediate School, this past, last week, half of last week and even today, our wireless access points, like, there's one over there that houses this building, or for this room, I've spent a ton of time with supporting things, but basically, something happens that where they lock up and essentially self-reboot. So in the middle of class, then like the entire internet would drop for two to six minutes, depending on various factors. Just kind of started happening this this last week, and today at the Intermediate School, we we have sent up tons of logs and analysis, and I've been just on the phone all day, every day, kind of thing, trying to pull logs, get analysis, and get get going. We still don't have a root cause. The the explanation earlier was, oh, we think it's, I don't want to get into all the ARPA questions and everything else, but they thought it was this, and for the longest time, kind of made sense from their perspective, but I think now we proved that it's not that, so then what is it? And they're back to the drawing board. So, and what's kind of interesting is I kind of almost wrote like a, like a breakup letter to our wireless access vendor, because I've been a champion of them for six years. I was on their website, I'm sure I'm down now, but with like a video that we made and everything. And, but it's, it's been pretty tough, but it kind of adds fuel to the fire, kind of moving away. So hopefully, we get this thing resolved with a patch or whatever. Very troubling, but that's what has been keeping me up at night recently.
And so by making these purchases, because pro, even though that this just did happen, but this will proactively...
Yeah.
...precautions for the future.
So if if this past week wasn't as bad as it has been, I would still be bringing a recommendation to the board for future improvement, because we are a couple generations behind. And when you look at, when you go through our schools, 95% of all internet access devices are all wireless. So it's the one thing we really have to nail down, otherwise, you know, it kind of doesn't matter. I mean, the only thing really in full force that's wired in these days really are just like the phones on, you know, teacher desk and, you know, on the desks. Almost every other device is wireless, so we have to get that right, and that's why it's such a problem, like currently at MIS. But I do hope that that gets resolved, and the biggest thing has just been which which direction do we want to go? Go with the vendor you know that you've had up until this past week success with, or go with a more converged, you know, analysis kind of approach with a single pane of glass? And that has helped us with all of our efforts this week, kind of help decide essentially it's time to kind of move on to a little bit stronger platform with better troubleshooting toolset, toolsets. We have done various, Freeman, our network manager, Freeman Baki, and myself have done numerous webinars and talked to other school districts that have purchased this other system by Mist. It seems like the right avenue to go, and so that's the recommendation there.
Thank you. Makes a lot of sense.
Any other questions for Mr. Souza? I need a motion to approve the Technology E-Rate Projects 2023 as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve Technology E-Rate Projects 2023 as presented.
I'll second.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Blount.
Aye.
Mr. Sartorius.
Aye.
Mr. Skwarzinski.
Aye.
Ms. Voss.
Aye.
And Mrs. Conquest.
Aye, motion carries. Mr. Souza, thanks for having all this laid out so easily to be able to understand where you're coming from and what you're asking for. It's appreciated.
Thank you.
All right, our last item for you is a electricity procurement contract that kind of developed rather quickly over the past few weeks, but Mrs. Robinson can talk to you about the the bid that our consultants conducted and the results.
Our consultants, our cornerstone energy, and what they do for us is they monitor our electricity bills, they help build our electricity budget, they go out to bid when we need new electric, electric service. And we have, we've been in a three-year contract that is expiring in October of 2023. So they actually, about a year ago or so, they went out and got bids for us, and they all came back too high. So the market is constantly changing, so they attempted to go out, they did not suggest that we went ahead a few months back. But now that we're getting closer to that October date, they saw a little dip in the cost, and so they wanted to go back out. The market changes so quickly that they had to accept bids, they had them through 10:00 AM today, and they're holding them for 24 hours for us, so that the board can approve and we could sign the contracts tomorrow morning. But that's not even typically, typical. Typically, the cost changes by the hour. So even as of this morning, there were companies that were providing bids that were waiting till the very last minute, because within the hour, apparently, the cost dropped again. So I don't follow the electric market like that. That's why we have consultants to do this for us. But the entire process that they use is attached, but I wanted to bring the summary to you. So we basically had four different vendors submit proposals, but they submitted six different proposals. So a vendor can submit energy-only or consolidated proposal, and the consolidated proposals include the cost of the energy and the transmission cost. If they submit energy-only, those transmission costs, those can change annually, and we don't know how they will change. So after reviewing all of the bids, you'll see, if you scroll down, oh, he's not here. So after reviewing all of the bids, you'll see if you scroll down, oh, he's not here. Well, the lowest, the two lowest bids were actually energy only bids. But we're actually recommending DynaG, which was the third, which is all the way on the right side. So that was the lowest consolidated bid. Like I said, that also includes the transmission cost. And we feel that it wasn't that much of a difference that it would be worth locking in also that transmission cost. When we looked at, even though, so the cost of energy in general or electricity is up compared to where we were three years ago. But these transmission costs are down. So we're not seeing an overall increase that much from our current budget. But the 24-month rates were slightly lower than the 36 months. So we're hopeful that maybe, you know, before that 24-month contract is over, things will take a turn and the rates might drop a little bit. And we can start, we can keep looking at that. So tonight we recommend, Aaron, you want to flip the slide? Just show you one more thing. This is just the trend of electricity and you'll see where that little bit is circled. That's where we locked in three years ago. So I remember when we did that over and over, they kept saying, these are the lowest prices we've ever seen. We never know if they'll go that low. And although they did stay pretty low for a while, they were right. But you can see the risk we would take if we wait at this point because they did shoot up so high pretty recently. And typically the cost does increase in the summer months. So we would be approaching that October date, risking that it might go back up. So we're recommending that we do lock into this two-year agreement with the consolidated, with DynaG. Also DynaG is our current provider. So we haven't had any problems. It would be, that would be a seamless transition.
Questions or comments for Mrs. Robinson? If not, I need a motion to approve the electricity procurement contract as presented.
I will make a motion to approve the electricity contract.
I'll second.
Mr. Blount.
Aye.
Ms. Voss.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Satorius.
Aye.
Mr. Shaneburg.
Aye.
Mr. Skwarzinski, aye. And Mrs. Conquest.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Robinson.
Our lone item for discussion and info is actually a follow-up to staffing, the preliminary staffing phase one that we brought to you last month. So we, we had an area that was inadvertently left off of that phase one. So we wanted to bring that back to you to clarify one more position.
There we go. Thank you again for having me. After I, it was an oversight. We failed to include a speech language path in our recommendation from last month. Numbers definitely warrant an increase. We are asking for a 1.0 speech language pathologist to be added across the district. Currently, just to give you an example, at the junior high, we have one and a half. So we would look to increasing the numbers where in the district, increase the FTEs in the district where the numbers warrant that. Dr. Staub and I work hand in hand in this one and she will assist in determining based on the numbers and the student needs, where the, where the 1.0 would be broken and or designated as a whole person in a building as well. So again, this aligns with our strategic goal one, demonstrating continuous improvement in student growth and achievement. And strategic goal two, cultivating a safe, engaging, authentic learning environment that promotes student confidence and growth. I worked with Mrs. Robinson in assuring that our budget could absorb the additional salary down there for a 1.0 FTE. And she assured me that we would be in a good place with the addition of this, this person.
How many speech language pathologists do we have at this time?
I knew you were going to ask me that, Mr. Skwarzinski.
You knew that, huh?
I did. I'm not even going to try to, I'm, I'm not going to lie to you. I don't know in the moment, but I can get you that number.
Is there going to be difficulty finding one more?
No, sir. I don't believe so. We've had really good fortune since last month when you folks allowed us to move forward with our plan. We posted positions and we've already filled quite a few of the positions for next year, the new positions, namely in some of the areas that are difficult to fill. We're finding that there's a pool of candidates out there that are looking for jobs in social work. And we expect this to fall right in alignment with that as well. We like to post our positions early so that we can get those graduates that are, you know, December grads that are looking for jobs and the May graduates that are going to be out on the market soon. But we're definitely seeing an influx. I know our principals have been busy filling those positions and interviewing. So I don't foresee this being an issue either.
The reason I ask is if I recall correctly, just a couple of years ago, there just weren't any people to be at.
You're correct. I think the universities really started beating the bushes and, and building their programs back up because it, it was very difficult to find special education teachers a few years ago, speech language paths, social workers. And we're seeing more and more graduates coming out. We've got folks doing internships with us and we welcome those relationships as well. But we are definitely seeing more people getting into those fields and that's, that's a positive result for us on, on the hiring end.
Any other questions for Ms. Massey?
I move toward approve the additional status.
We didn't have this for action. This was, yeah. Well, you, you take action when you hire the person. So we were just updating you with, because we didn't include this position when we presented last month.
I appreciate your support though, Mr. Satorius. Thank you, everyone.
Okay. We're going to move on to board topics. Anybody have any board topics tonight?
I do have a board topic. You know, and Mrs. Massey just spoke to it a bit, you know, speaking to the long range strategic goal number two. For, I know that we'll be discussing that in April and would like the administration team to prepare, to speak in detail about how we handle restorative justice. Speaking to, if, you know, in, from hearing from the community, there's been heightened, heightened problems around assault with our children. And, and even in cases from what I'm hearing racially, things happening. And so just want to understand what we have going on, what's the current policies in place and what we're doing for restorative justice with these matters.
Yeah, I will say, Mr. Blount did contact me and let me know that this was a topic. And so I even suggested next month would be normally when we would get back to strategic goal number two. So it actually, the, the timing of, you know, talking about that, it works right in with the, the, the safe learning environment that is our strategic goal number two. So thank you for bringing that up. And we will make sure that we've got our, you know, we've got a team of both administrators and some of the, the professionals that are in the buildings working with kids too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Anybody else have any board topics? Okay. Administrative reports.
Mr. Souza, anything else? As he's coming up, like when he said he's spent a lot of time working on wireless access points. If you follow Mr. Souza on Twitter, you would have seen him at our bus barn yesterday, Sunday, working on GPS units and trying to get buses to start too. So for him to say something's taking a lot of time is, is a different level.
Yeah, we discovered sometimes when a bus goes out for repair, the repair shop disconnects the GPS harness wire. So figure that one out. And fun fact, apparently there is kind of a kill switch on the buses. I guess the back door has to be locked or unlocked for it to start. And that was why I couldn't, when I was, I could turn the bus on to like kind of AC mode or battery mode. But it was enough to trigger the GPS, make sure it worked. But that was like, hey, your bus may not start. Just FYI, you know, but fun stuff there. Just real quick, the tech team is investigating possibly migrating to a new phone system. We've been looking at this for a while now, a new phone system similar to the one at the Monica High School and other surrounding districts. It would, if we were to move to this direction, this would be an over summer thing. But if we go there, it would give us many benefits around the safety where announcements can kind of get pre-recorded. So if you were to do a fire drill or a lockdown, you can have pre-recorded messages going out and lights going off and sirens and all this other stuff. And text alerts going out to principals, even the police if it's a serious matter. And it would give us all these other kind of functionalities that like a current system, while noticeably cheaper, just doesn't really do or can handle. So that's one thing we're looking at. In addition to that, a team of administrators and a little technology, we've been looking at a crisis management smartphone app for teachers and staff. And what that is in a nutshell, I mean, the, the big selling point is like an active shooter, but more realistically, maybe like a fire drill. And envision a fire drill where you, if I'm a teacher, I go outside and I pull maybe a folder with a printed off roster from six weeks ago or whatever that is. And I go outside and I maybe radio and you're giving thumbs up of if I'm, if I have all my students or not. But the newer kind of better technology solution is to use an application on your smartphone. So staff would basically have a roster, a live, up-to-date roster from at least like last night of their students and be able to kind of check off like accounted for, yes, yes, yes. Like Jillian, Adam, Suzie, Billy, all here, but whoa, Mary is not. Like I don't know where, Mary was in the bathroom, but we went, we ran out. So we don't know, nobody knows where Mary is. Well, another teacher could, if they were to grab Mary, hey, come with me, she can find her in the system and mark her accounted for. So as a principal, all these numbers start funneling in. You can tell how many students are accounted for, who are not, who do we need to go find? Furthermore, then secretaries and others could go in and start marking the kids who went home for a doctor's appointment could mark off like, left the building, safe, you know, don't worry about. So that's one aspect, just kind of like a roster, checkoff list. Other solutions have like checkoff lists for when it is kind of a serious event and what to do. So you take like perhaps like that crisis management bookfold plan that we have. And then it gets like digitized into almost like a little cheat, like a cheat sheet checkoff, like do this, do this, do this. And then they also function, have like kind of a group text functionality for all the staff in the building to kind of send in text messages and principals to send out. So a lot of, a lot of bells and whistles. We're looking at, there's multiple vendors in this space. But it is something that, you know, we are currently evaluating and perhaps bringing to you guys as an action in the future months. But it is pretty interesting and really kind of coincides with the safety. We have Mr. Scott Lustig, our school security officer, kind of lead, also a part of the team from the safety perspective. And obviously principals from their side and some tech for just how does this really work? With that, that's all the major stuff I want to talk to you guys about. Any other questions, Tech?
Well, comment and a question for you. Going back to the buses, the bus rollout of the, the GPS application. We rolled that out, you rolled that out in January, right?
Yeah, it was kind of a staged things. We had some buses had GPS got installed quickly, some then got on back order. Then the new buses got a bad GPS thing. So there's, it wasn't like a smooth takeoff, so to speak, but.
It was kind of like in batches of 10 to 12 buses as, as they had time to hook things up. And then they had to calibrate the system and make sure, you know, everything was working right on the software side. So. But yes, by now I believe all of our buses have been added to that system.
Yeah, I just, I've heard comments, you know, good things about it from the community. And so they were happy about it. And that some had mentioned, oh, it's new. It just happened like last week. I was like, we've had it out for some time.
Yeah.
But so that makes sense now.
We, I did do another like kind of big blast two weeks ago. We finally got another kind of major chunk of other things figured out. For the longest time, we're, we had, just couldn't figure out how to do it, like the outer placement, like Saratoga routes. That was just very difficult. How do I, how do we figure this out? So we finally have a place, a plan in place now. We're kind of bringing in Saratoga and we're starting to go after MPC. Because if you remember from like the last presentation we did about how like the average driver has four routes, two in the morning, two in the afternoon. Well, that's excluding MPC. MPC is its own animal with four routes every day in the, by themselves. And so how do we set like MPC AM incoming or MPC PM incoming or arrival, you know, those kinds of. So we're starting to kind of get the MPC pickups as well now. That's been hard to kind of figure out with, there's a lot of like weird bell time math involved with the system. But yeah, so we're, we're finally, we're getting more confident. The other thing is we didn't really advertise a lot because the high school buses, we use a lot of high school buses every day. So we needed the high school buses also get GPS turned on. Otherwise you would just get alternating Thursday access or whatever. So we, so they're more, much more online. So we're starting to kind of push the advertisement a little bit more to the best of our ability. But yeah, it's, you know, every, over the past month, the tech team in particular has gotten a lot better of troubleshooting why it's not working. And so we've been able, we've been able to help parents a lot faster over the past couple of weeks. So like, oh, well, your alert zone doesn't have, has the AM bus, but not the PM bus or whatever. And so we're getting a little bit better on that. But there's still some issues with bus substitutions from, not so much at the transportation department, but just in the program itself. There's still a delay on executing, so we're hoping for some patch coming out in April. I guess we're, we aggressively bus substitute compared to other districts, I guess. So, but it is honestly, I think it's going fairly well. We have over 1,300 parents now. Last month we had about just over 1,000. So we picked up another 300 just over the past couple of weeks. So pretty exciting news.
I know, again, hearing from the community and being a parent in the district as well, it's, it's a great piece of mine. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
I guess my question was part of that was how we're coordinating with the high schools when we have them substitute driving.
Yeah. So we, we put together kind of a somewhat complicated spreadsheet where the transportation office enters in bus substitutions every day. And then, so we take that and then myself in the morning or usually kind of shout out to Pam Wolf in the afternoon. She takes the kind of the afternoon shift, if you will, to reprogram. Eventually we do plan on actually training transportation to, to kind of take this on. It's not necessarily hard, but I know especially in the morning, things are very hectic. So we've just been kind of carrying it and doing it for them. Maybe when they get that last person they've been trying to find, then that would be a pretty good segue to hand the baton, if you will, six in the morning bus transportation substitutions. But yeah, so thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Mrs. Robinson, you're the next person I see.
Hi. So a couple of things. I just wanted to give the board notice that I will be bringing an amended budget in April. So I haven't done an amended budget since I've been here. I don't think we've had one in several years. The budget's never perfect, but that's what it is. It's a budget. But since we had somewhat of a major change, I would like to bring an amended budget. So the HVAC project at the junior high was planned on being a summer project. And I just didn't include much of it of the cost in this year's budget. I did a little payout that I knew we would pay out for some equipment. But the contractor will be starting on May 30th. I will expect to do probably a pretty large payout in June because the project is going to move pretty fast. So I wanted to get that included in the budget. And then since I'll be amending it anyway, I'll be bringing some of the other changes that we've talked about. The additional surplus that we received. And then because of that surplus, some of the additional expenses that we've taken on. So Dr. Cheserick will have a recommendation for some additional curriculum materials. And we've done some building and grounds purchases. We did a new truck and some grounds equipment. So I will include those things in the amended budget. And then I'll also include some additional expenditures for a bus camera system, which kind of leads me into my next item to talk about. I've been working with Mr. Souza and our director of transportation on upgrading our bus cameras. So we're working with one vendor and the plan right now is we're going to pilot the new camera system in about three or four buses for a few weeks and just make sure there's no kinks to it. So right now our cameras on one of our better buses would have three cameras. So our new system would have four cameras and they'd have a wider view. So we would get all different angles. And then we'd also, with the technology involved, we'd be able to download the clips faster and we'd have access to them. So now typically there's, you literally have to like walk out to the bus and get the tape. And so now it'll all be cloud-based and it'll be like, you will just start to download the clip. You could even start to look at the video while the bus is still out. So there's all kinds of advantages of improving our system. And, but Aaron and I will continue to update the board and bring recommendations. This is, we're just in the very early stages. Why, why are you laughing?
No, because we had to clarify this at a meeting. It's not actually tape anymore. It is like an SD card. But it was only a few years ago, we did still have some actual tape that we were dealing with.
So we will continue to update you on that, but that will be part of an amended budget also to make that purchase this year so that we can get ready over the summer and then fully implement at the start of next year.
For the, the bus cameras?
Yeah.
Do the parents in the district, do they have to sign a waiver off about, you know, recording their children on the bus or anything like that?
No, I mean, there's cameras on the buses now. So no, that's not something that we would have to get from a parent to permission. So no, that's not something that we would have to get from a parent to permission. And then the last thing I wanted to give the board an update was on the activity buses. So we have the buses running every day. I talked to our director of transportation today. We have about, it varies every day, but around 80, 85 kids using the buses. So we have four buses going, just as a reminder, one goes to each of the four elementary schools. So we have larger amounts of kids going out to Jones and Walnut Trails, which makes sense, they're a little bit further away. But we do have kids riding all four buses, so it's been a success so far.
Just clarifying on the amended budget, the process for that is exactly like your initial budget where you have to basically put it on display in tentative form for at least 30 days. There has to be a public hearing, you know, to allow public comment on the budget and then approval. And I think because of the timing of some meetings, I think she's bringing it in April and is it, yeah, June is when it would come back for approval.
Sorry, I had that written down and I forgot to say that. That's why I'm bringing it so soon. Obviously, like I can make changes up until June, but there isn't 30 days between May and June, so.
Ms. Massey, anything else?
I just want to make comment before we move on, just again, to Mrs. Robertson, your team, hearing from the communities again about the activity buses, it's definitely a good thing. So thank you for that.
We, we also have to give much kudos to, to Dr. Staub who couldn't be with us. Like she was planning on talking about the activity buses, but she specifically asked, can someone please update the board about the activity buses? So thank you, Mrs. Robinson, for stepping in there.
Mr. Skorzenyski, I have an answer. Lucky 13. We have 13 SLPs in the district, two and a half at the campus, one and a half at OX, four at MPC, two at the elementary building, one and a half at Jones and one and a half at Walnut Trails. You're welcome, sir.
You came all the way back up for that. I love it, love it. Dr. Cheserek, do you have anything else?
Like Mrs. Robinson said, that I would be coming to talk about the addition of some new curriculum. I'll be coming back in April to make a recommendation to the board. This school year, we've been piloting in fifth grade, five fifth-grade teachers have been piloting social studies and science, the same Savas programs that you approved that we adopt this year in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So we have five fifth-grade teachers who have been teaching from Savas in social studies and science this year. We have found that the teachers are very pleased with the programs. They align, of course, with the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade programs using a common vocabulary, common type of materials. The sixth-grade teachers are very excited about having some students come into them with some background in social studies and science that, that they will be teaching as well. So for fifth grade, the program is the My World Interactive, which is a project-based learning that develops skills for being responsible citizens. The program aligns with Illinois State Standards and the College Career and Civic Life Framework for Social Studies, which is the C3 framework. The Elevate Science Program from Savas is a phenomena-based learning that includes problem-solving, critical thinking, and hands-on lab experiments. And it aligns with the next-generation science standards. It lets the kids use, the lab kits let the kids get hands-on and conduct weekly science experiments, which they love, and the teachers are pleased with all of the resources and the student progress so far. So at the April board meeting, I will bring to you the quotes that we received from Savas and the recommendation to adopt the programs for all of fifth grade for next year. So in social studies, it will include student consumable text, digital license, and content readers, which are little packs of readers that go along with the topics that they're studying. In science, it will include the student text, the digital license, and the lab kits for each teacher. And training will also be included. We will offer training during the summer with your approval in both June and August for teachers to go through training. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that I will be coming back next month with the actual numbers for you for a recommendation and possible approval for next year. Does anyone have questions?
This curriculum had, has workbooks that go along with it, right? It's not all digital?
Correct, yes.
Right, okay. And then the hands-on for the science as well? Perfect.
I don't know if anybody else has any curriculum questions. I want, while, I wanted to go back in time to the instructional coaches.
Yes.
While I have you. I thought of a question, but everybody was gone. My, my question is the feedback survey and getting feedback or data or information from the teachers, both who go through programs and then I guess who don't also. So what exactly is that looking like? Is it at the end of a cycle or any teacher can fill out feedback surveys or is it only certain times or what's the best way to get the most feedback?
At the end of each quarter, the coaches have been sending out a Google form to the teachers where they have questions that is promoting feedback on a variety of, of areas and getting their opinion on what they'd like to add, have added to the program or areas for improvement.
And has there been, been good quality feedback coming through on those surveys and not, not just kind of checking boxes, but you're getting good feedback to move forward with?
Yes, and actually, we, you know, can share that information with you if you would appreciate seeing that.
Maybe some of them, maybe a few of them would be interesting, yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else have a question? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I've got a couple of topics I just wanted to bring to the board's attention. First is, I know Ms. Wilson was encouraging our schools and put out a social media post. Tomorrow is World Down Syndrome Day, March 21st. It's set on March 21st because individuals with Down Syndrome have three of the 21st chromosomes, so 321. And you, you celebrate that by participating in lots of socks or, or like a wacky sock day. And Ms. Wilson was already telling us the socks that she was planning to wear tomorrow, but we encourage all of the schools, all the kids, all the teachers, all the staff to wear some wacky socks in support of World Down Syndrome Day tomorrow. Also, student registration for the 23-24 school year will be kicking off in April. I believe we have April 10th as the go-live date. We do have the, the early registration discount by May 15th, I believe it is $30. Correct me if I'm wrong. Mr. Souza, do you remember that one?
It's $30.
Yeah, thank you. So please, that really helps us establish staffing levels. We always seem to have a very late wave of registrations in the summer, which cause class-size staffing issues that we have to scramble to deal with. So we encourage everyone to please log in. We will be doing the big residency check behind the scenes, so hopefully we won't even need to, to deal with the residency issue for the majority of families. But please, it really helps us establish our staffing levels and class sizes and the principals greatly appreciate having a much better picture of the students that will be returning to our schools. So please look for information on, about that in early April with a go-live date of April 10th. Question?
Yeah, can you just clarify, they don't actually have to pay by that date, just register?
Very true. This is not a cash flow issue. We are not looking for student fees, student fees. We ask that they pay by the start of the new school year. And then for families in hardship, we do have payment plan opportunities to, to help people meet those needs. Third, we do have a school board election coming up on April 4th in the municipal elections. School board elections can often fly under the radar. Sometimes they get airtime, some, sometimes they do not, but Manuka 201 has three open seats and we have six candidates running for those open seats. They all happen to be in the room right now. Ms. Emily Conquest and Ms. Vanita Voss are rerunning for their seats. Mrs. Jennifer Monson is running. Mr. Thomas McGowan and Mr. Brian Pullman are there in that row and I see Ms. Catherine Tenelli is also in the room as well. So thank you all for putting your names forward and stepping forward to try to be a part of the, the governance of Manuka 201. We wish you all the best of luck in the election and we are, we, we will be sending out information to, to our families and posting things, but as the election falls during our spring break, we want to make sure that people remember that they can get out and vote early. There is absentee ballots available, so we'll be pushing some information on how people can do that. But we encourage everyone to get out and vote. You know, our democracy, our government requires a sound electorate and people participating in the voting process, so we encourage everyone to get out and vote. And finally, as I mentioned, spring break is upon us in a couple of weeks, so we wish everyone a safe, refreshing, and relaxing week. Please still vote, but everyone enjoy your spring break. And that is all I have at this time. We do not have anything to go into close session for. Any questions for me?
No other questions or comments for the board? I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you for coming, everyone.